All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Special City Council Meeting of April the 10th, 2025. Thank you for coming out this evening. And Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Torres Walker. Councilmember Freitas.
Present.
Mayor Protim Rocha.
Here.
Mayor Bernal.
Here.
I will note for the record, Councilmember Torres Walker is absent at 6:00 PM.
All right. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item is continuation of our presentation on the Parks and Recreation Department budget from last meeting. And so if we could just have a brief report on that?
Yeah, thanks so much, Mayor and City Council. We started off our last session with Parks and Recreation, getting presentations from staff, and went into some possible efforts to mitigate or gain more revenue. And so we wanted to know first if you wanted a recap of the last slide, just to refresh, you know, and if you have any questions for Parks and Recreation.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the council on their budget presentation they gave from last time? Okay.
They answered all my questions, and they did a very good job. We appreciate it. The only, I think, question that came back to us is at the very end, the revenue opportunities. And frankly, my response would be, yes, go, engage in this. You know, it's always trying to find that balance between advertising and overdoing it. Some people like billboard advertising, you know, the people hate it and things of that sort. But as far as I'm concerned, I think the answer is yes, let's go forward, with the one caveat that any money that's generated stays in the Park and Recreation budget for capital improvements or other needs, that it does not go, I don't know, necessarily into the general fund, maybe a specific fund for that type, so that people realize, especially when they're asking businesses or individual foundations or nonprofits to participate, that the money that is generated will go 100% back to Park Recreation. I know that that's my feeling. I don't know if it's shared with the other council. But that would be it. I think the ideas are worthy of looking at and considering and bringing back to the city council.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I do not have any public comment.
Okay, thank you. I just had a couple of questions first. First one has to do, or primarily it has to do with the capital needs, because each facility, it seems like, has needs, or the different, not each facility, but different facilities have needs. And so is there a way to prioritize those in relationship to what's absolutely needed, as opposed to, I know, for example, the soccer field out at the sports complex says 2027, and that's great to have a little bit of time, but there are some other things, like at the water park, for example, that's a revenue generator, the big slide is $3 million, or estimated that much, and so that's going to be out of commission until that's replaced, correct? It's not safe to operate on?
Yes, that's correct. That amenity will be out of service for the foreseeable future.
Okay. So I guess my ask would just be if we could prioritize the, in order of what's most important of all of these, and then at least council would be able to see, you know, what we have to work with. So that would be helpful. Yeah, sure. And then the other question that I had, or the other comment is, I second what Councilmember Freitas said. I think that we should look at every revenue idea, and especially in line with the fact that we haven't had, kept up with CPI over the past, what, eight, nine years now? So I think we should look at all of them. I like the sponsorship idea. I think that, you know, that's great if we can get some sponsorships and, you know, get a chunk of money, and that would be good. The, a question on the stolen artwork on Lone Tree Way, and this is a little off subject, but, you know, I guess the little girl got stolen, and then we took the dad down so that it wouldn't be stolen as well. Is, are we intending to replace that? I know we just did a repair on it, and it was really expensive a few years back, so I don't know what it would cost.
Yeah, we did a repair, and I think they're looking into options, but for right now, we're going to hold on any repairs until after the budget.
Okay. Would it be possible to get an approximate cost on that repair, just so we can see that is one of our?
The other one was like $22,000. The last repair. It's in one of your reports.
Yeah, it was pretty expensive.
But this is a replacement, so it's going to be way more than that. That was just repairing the damaged art. There was a missing hand or two, and so now we're talking about a whole piece of art. So.
My wife was on council during that time, and that was her claim to paint this public art in the city. That was one of her pieces that she liked of this. There was damage at one time, and, you know, everybody assumed it had to be replaced.
She's here, Mike.
Everybody assumed that it would have to be replaced completely, but that wasn't the situation. So it might have to, but there are, there can be other ways to get it corrected, that's all I'm saying, at a cheaper cost.
Yeah, we were looking into alternative ways to get it fixed.
Okay, perfect. And, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I thought the presentation was outstanding, and I appreciate, first of all, meeting all of you in person, and listening to some of the really positive praise received from young residents and their families and parents that have reaped the rewards of the hard work and services you provide. A couple of things that I appreciated about the presentation is that you showed not only the expenditures, but the revenue and the offset of the general fund, and I too agree with Councilman Freitas's comments about looking to bring in or look at generating some additional revenue and that sort of thing, because I do think as time goes on, so does the cost for services and admission to just about anything that we do in public. The other thing I wanted to ask, or just throw out as a thought, is I don't know, I know that the Standing Committee with the Antioch Unified School District, that Councilmember Torres Walker and I sit on, and we've had some conversation with City Manager Scott and Assistant City Manager Brad Helfenberger, about potentially looking at shared resources with the school district. I'm wondering if that might be something we can look into as a way of expanding services, and maybe even possibly generating some additional revenue if we're able to introduce additional programs, maybe closer to neighborhoods where people live, and doing a joint venture with the school district. I know that's something that we're in the business, right now, we're talking about, as just an idea, but maybe I'd just like for the Parks and Rec to give that some thought of how we might be able to look at some partnerships with the school district, so that we can provide additional services where students reside in their neighborhoods, at neighborhood schools. So I think just that's something worth looking at. And then finally, one last thing had to do with the seniors. There's a lot of activities that seniors do. It was a wonderful presentation, and I've spoken to a number of the seniors who benefit from your services at the Antioch Historical Society, because I used to do work with the sports ledges downstairs, and I did a lot of work with, in collaboration with the upstairs staff with the Antioch Historical Society. So one of the questions I had had to do with transportation. I don't know, you know, being with that we're involved with Tri Delta, and obviously you're with CCTA, what needs that our seniors may need for transportation. I understand that sometimes that can be a challenge, so I'm curious to see what we might be able to do to better serve our seniors, because I understand that sometimes there might be opportunities for discounted tickets or activities, but sometimes it's hard to get a large group from point A to point B. I don't know if there's any potential of maybe looking at getting a vehicle from the city of Antioch, or donation, or contribution, who knows? But I'd like to explore that as well, just looking to see if we can do our part to help support our seniors in going to places that may, wouldn't be able to go without that additional help.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know, because I was once on Tri Delta. At one point, Tri Delta does, I don't want to say dispose, but I don't remember, in the past, we were able to get one of the smaller buses for $5, because we were part of the JPA. We may want to look into that. But then I don't know if there's an expense around liability, you know, the special type of training, if somebody needs to be trained to drive those particular buses, but I do remember that we had that. And then also, and Mr. Helfenberger, maybe you might remember this, at one point, we were subsidizing the youth bus passes. I know Tri Delta drops those prices in the summer, and we subsidize the prices even lower. Maybe we might look into that for our seniors, doing something similar to that, and our representatives on Tri Delta can possibly bring that to their attention about doing a senior fee for the, for our senior bus ticket fee for our seniors, or for our active adults. I'm sorry, I was corrected the other day, active adult.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The one, Mr. Hefenberger, the one thing I would say when you're looking at sponsorships, there are some, how do I say, wealthy Antioch citizens that have their own foundations, you know, and I'm thinking the Bezwick Foundation that goes to the East Bay Community Fund, Leo Fontana, you know, has his own foundation, and so there are, you know, foundations here in the community itself, and a lot of the community doesn't know that. They tend to be somewhat quiet, but they should be on your list of making direct contact, because they're, they would probably be more inclined, you know, to be a sponsor, particularly for something in our community.
All right. And then just a couple more things. Do you have an update, or maybe it's a CIP question, on the Nick Rodriguez, the $2 million that we got in that grant that was going to create improvements at Nick Rodriguez Center?
Yes. So originally, we envisioned that that grant would be able to do a full renovation of the facility, but we've, after going out to bid and getting cost estimates, the $2.2 million grant is really only going to cover the roof replacement and HVAC replacement that's needed at that facility. That project is out to bid right now, and the bid is going to close in a couple of weeks, and so we're hoping to complete that this summer.
Okay, okay. Were there any ADA improvements envisioned within the original $2.2 million?
Originally, there were, but again, as at this point, the funding that we have is only going to be sufficient for the roof and the HVAC.
Okay. But so we're all ADA compliant there, correct, at that facility?
Not totally. I mean, we're ADA compliant in the fact that we're grandfathered in from, you know, the facilities before that time, but if that facility were to be built today, it would not be ADA compliant.
Okay, perfect. And also, do you have an update on the Contra Loma Park, when that's going to be open?
Yes, that's also under construction. Last I heard from Director Bunting is that it's going to be within a couple of months, it'll be open.
Okay. And we're going to do a big celebration, because that's a big deal.
Big celebration. We're going to invite our friends from the Rising Juntos, who originally helped us acquire that grant, and had a lot of input on the design of that park. It's going to be a big celebration.
Invite the Sycamore neighborhood and everybody out there. Good. That'll be really good. And then the last one's a really minor thing, but there's a sign in front of the Antioch Community Center that says, no kids, certain hours, or something like that. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
And so it kind of, and I've heard comments over time, and Councilmember Wilson and I were talking about it, is there a way to either soften that or not have it up at all? Because it just, it gives the appearance for a community center that we don't welcome young people, and so that's the opposite of what we're trying to do.
Right. Those signs are only supposed to be up during school hours, when those kids are supposed to be in school. They're mobile signs, so we take them down, but we can look at softening the language.
Yeah, I think that'd be nice, just because we don't want to give the impression that young people are not welcome there.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other question?
Yeah, but we do want to go to school.
Yes, we do want to go to school, but for a young person that may be going through something traumatic, that that's a safe place for them to go to, because when you're going through a trauma and you're seeing that, you may think, I'm not welcome here, I don't know where I need to go. So if we can, I'd prefer it to not be up, but if we can, at the very least, soften that language, because we still want that to be a place, if somebody is experiencing some type of danger or trauma, that they can, that's a place that they can go to, that's going to be safe.
Right, yeah, absolutely. And we've done some training with our staff, so they can identify those individuals, as opposed to kids who are maybe just not in school. So, but yes, I appreciate the comments, and we'll look into that.
All right. It was, we had our, we had our meeting there yesterday, and it was great seeing all the kids when we walked out the door in the afternoon, and they were milling around and using the facility, so that was just, that was really nice to see. And the place looks great. So thank you all. You guys do an amazing job over there. Super welcoming, hospitable, beautiful. So it's, you guys have really kept it up well, so thank you. Thank you for all you do, at both facilities, but we were at Antioch Community Center yesterday, so thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item? All right. We will move on to item number two on the agenda, which is the City Attorney and Human Resources Department. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you all. Yeah, thank you so much.
That is hilarious. It's, I know.
Yeah. That's all right. So this is, this is item two, City Attorney and Human Resources Department. City Manager Scott?
Thank you so much. These two. Come on over here. All right. So tonight, we have two items, the City Attorney budget and the Human Resources budget. For the City Attorney budget, it includes a new deputy city attorney position in accordance with the Department of Justice settlement agreement, and those, that information is listed in the attachments A. And then page five of the attachment details the legal services paid in fiscal year 2023, fiscal year 2024, and through February 28th of 2025, as requested by the council. And then for Human Resources, this budget reflects the addition of a new Human Resources manager, which was previously approved by city council, and Human Resources is also responsible for the loss control internal service fund budget, which amounts for risk management of the city and workers' compensation insurance, and that budget worksheet is also included in attachment A. So the City Attorney will go first, followed by the Human Resources Director, Ana Cortez.
Thank you.
So we'll go first with the worst, City Attorney. So I've kept this very simple. I wanted to try to, you know, you've received the detail in your staff report, so I really want to talk, I think the things that, from what I understand, are of most importance with the department. As everyone knows, I am an interim city attorney, so I am between your previous full house, in-house city attorney, and the intended in-house city attorney, for which you will be doing a recruitment shortly. So this is the budget for the department in the current fiscal year. So starting off with the department's current, as the city manager mentioned, there will be a change, but this is the current org chart. It's pretty simple. There's a city attorney, one, well, no, this is actually going forward, I'm sorry. There are two assistants, and then there will be one deputy. So there will technically be four attorneys in our office. The fourth attorney will be added as a condition of the settlement with the US DOJ, and that attorney will have to focus entirely on police matters, and will be dedicated to providing the legal advice and representation of the city in relation to the MOU that the city and the federal government have. So that person will be basically your, essentially your police attorney, and then there would be three other attorneys, and there would be a distribution of work. We will talk in a little bit at the last slide, in which I'll talk about some ideas that have, I think the goal here is to talk about the impact to the department and the financial issues. So I want to walk through some ideas based on what I've been able to see in my experience in the legal field and municipal law. So we'll talk a little bit about that workflow distribution. So, because I think that might actually have some financial implications for the city going forward, and might allow some economies of scale to be achieved. So it's a preview of coming attractions. We also have a phenomenally talented and wonderful administrative analyst in our department, Rakia, who really keeps us going. And I actually had the pleasure of working with her in my previous stint as your interim, and she has just been wonderful for the department, and I cannot emphasize how helpful she is. So that's the org chart. This is the function. I, you know, I had to be a lawyer and come up with this really small text and put it all together with a bunch of punctuation marks, and then demand that all of you instantly read that and understand everything right away, because we like to overly complicate things. But in a nutshell, basically, this office provides legal representation to the city. So we do everything that the law involves, or we're responsible. So meetings, ethics, records, we're advising. All of the departments, we are advising all of your departments, land use, cannabis, where there are legal issues. And then, of course, if there are lawsuits, and there are many, as we'll talk in a little bit, we are ultimately responsible for supervising outside counsel or making sure that those whom the city hires are doing their jobs. So pretty much, we do a little bit of everything. Municipal law generally is a very broad subject. It really is made up of several subjects. It really is made up of several subjects. And so, you know, you really can't confine it. It's not like I just do corporate law. I do transactions, I do mergers and acquisitions, I do nonprofit law. It's actually quite broad. So that's what we do, in a nutshell. This is the budget. I, you know, you all have this in front of you, but in a nutshell, the biggest driver of the cost of this office, and I'm going to get to the next slide where we talk about that in more detail, is outside counsel costs. The council is very aware of the litigation that this city has had, especially in the past few years, much of it related to the Police Department. But a significant cost driver has also been a very large public works project that we have undertaken, and then also a pipeline matter that was something that was decided and has wound its way all the way up to the appeals court. And so, but if you look at our budget, you will see contracts-outside legal, which is in the middle roughly of the spreadsheet, that's it. I mean, that's, that's the big, big number. The next biggest, well, actually, technically, that's the second largest number. The next is personnel. So that's the salaries and benefits for those five full-time employees. So if you were to remove all outside legal counsel contracts just for the sake of a thought experiment, you're never going to be able to do that. But if you did, that's, you know, essentially, half the budget of the department roughly is for outside counsel expenses. And so with that, I'd like to then move to this, if you're looking at the screen, you're not going to see this, but this has been provided. What we did is we went through, and Councilmember Freitas did make the request initially, but it was something that we really thought was good to put together. We developed a summary of the outside counsel costs in the last three years. If you look at the very bottom, you will see the cost. So it was about $1.8 million in fiscal '23. It was $2.6 million in fiscal year '24. All we have to date is the cost that were captured, and that is about $1.2 million, but I suspect that's going to be in the low twos when you true up your fiscal year. So I believe that only captures the invoices that were received and processed in the early part of this year. So we've, we've received several more invoices from the various firms, and we will continue to receive those, and our finance director will, you know, ultimately be able to true up the number. But as a rough estimate, I would say it's going to be in the vicinity of $2 to $2.2 or $2.3 this year, based on what we were able to project from the current matters that are pending. And so we went from $1.8, we spiked up to $2.7. We're now probably going to be at about $2.3. We're dropping. The biggest driver of that is the various police litigation. And let me take a segue here. So what you see on the screen and what you see in your packet, this is what we actually pay from city sources. When I say city sources, I mean any funds, the general fund, or if we can pay with an enterprise fund. So this is, this is the counsel we are paying out of pocket, if you will, from the city. We have Karma, and we have MPA, and we have Irma, which provide our outside counsel for employment matters and for the initial layer of insurance. Technically, it's not insurance, it's pooling, which is different than insurance, but our coverage, and then we have excess coverage. So those counsel are not captured on this spreadsheet, because they are being paid by our pooling authorities. So we have a retention in each of the cases. When we hit our retention, the pooling covers not only the judgments or the settlements if we pay them, it covers the defense expenses. And I believe, is it $50,000 per matter? So in each matter, each litigation matter, we pay the first $50,000. That's, that's what we call retention. That's a term of art in municipal pooling, but if you analogize it to your own situation, if you had a, you know, if your car was damaged, you would pay a deductible, maybe whatever it is, $100,000, whatever. That's essentially the equivalent of our retention. So we pay the deductible, which we call a retention, out of our, you know, I believe it's general fund. So general fund will pay the deductible for each matter, and that is $50,000. And once we hit that, then the coverage kicks in, and the coverage pays from thereon, even if there's a settlement, even if there's a large judgment, up to the limits. And so we have an initial layer which is covered by, it's not, it's, is it still MPA? Or is it? Okay, MPA, and they cover the first layer of coverage, and then Karma kicks in and covers the excess layer. So we have several lawsuits that are being covered by our various carriers. That's not covered up here. And so I just want to be clear that when, when you pay for, when you, when you, when you're budgeting for the City Attorney's Department, you're budgeting for the outside counsel that we actually pay out of pocket, if you will. And then, I don't know if, Dawn, where, where the budget money comes for our premiums and our, our retentions for insured matters.
Yeah, so the, for workers' compensation, that comes from a workers' compensation internal service fund, which we'll be discussing when we get to the Human Resources Budget. But the general liability and our deductible payments are paid from the non-departmental general fund, which, you know, we haven't fully discussed the non-departmental, but in the attachments that I provided before, there was the insurance and claims that pays for the general liability as well as the deductible that we have to pay.
And so I, if you, so that covers our covered matters. So looking at this spreadsheet, again, it's a very large, or it's, the letters are very small, but I do want to highlight a few of the larger expenses. Looking at the firm Hanson Bridget, you see their current, the current for this fiscal year is, and that's not, the completed fiscal year is about $636,000. Those principally are the police arbitrations that we're handling. And so those are matters that, where we have officers who have arbitrated their dismissals or their discipline, that, that is, you know, as you can see, that's been a very expensive line item, but I just wanted to make clear to the council what that is for. Then we have down near the bottom, we have a firm called Best Bestin Krieger that are about $130,000. We, they have done some investigations for us workplace-wise, but their principal services in the past year and year before that, as I understand, is land use. And we're going to talk about this in a moment, because my next slide is where I want to really talk about how we could save some money for the department. So they're doing work for, you know, the various developments that come through SEQA Advice and all the related development issues. They, you know, they have very good attorneys who are working with our staff. As you, as you can imagine, housing and community development is a big issue now. The HCD and all of the laws that they enforce, all the affordable housing laws, so they're assisting with that. Another very large item is the firm Myers-Nave. They are handling, first, they're handling our dispute with the contractor for the water plant, and that is obviously a high-ticket matter. And then they, there was the pipeline litigation involving the council's denial of a franchise several years back. That has wound its way through the courts, all the way up to the appellate court, and that there was litigation associated with that. So those are, those are the largest ticket items, because if you look, what you'll see is those, and those are all, they're excellent firms, they have done excellent work for us, I want to emphasize that as I have looked at the records, the quality of the counsel we're getting from all three of these firms is outstanding. And that is my assessment, having come in and wrapped my arms around the legal work, all the outside counsel work. But as you see, it's a, it's a couple of firms that are handling very high-dollar, high-ticket, high-exposure matters, and then we have several other firms that are handling smaller matters. And I just, before, I'll jump to the next slide, but what we have really is a spike. And, and a lot of it is driven by the various police issues, which this counsel is very aware. I'm not going to go into those. I think you all know those cases very well, and I don't really want to get into the nitty-gritty of the cases, because I don't want to, you know, get into confidential discussions. But that has been a very large driver of outside counsel costs. And then the water plant, and then some of the pipeline. But there's a lot of other matters where we've, we've taken on counsel. And so I want to talk now about what can we do? What I understand from these workshops is you want, as a counsel, some ideas of how the department can save money, how we can cut costs. And ultimately, as you see, you really can't cut costs out of the department, because roughly half of the cost, the budget of the, of the department is outside counsel. So if there's any way you're really going to be able to achieve some savings from the City Attorney's Department, it would be outside counsel. And so I have here some ideas, and let me go through those, and then I'm happy to answer your questions. That will be the end of my presentation. But the first one, and I need to work with our community development, would be to better capture outside land use and SEQA counsel costs. And so one thing that is not clear to me yet, but I've had some preliminary discussions with community development, is we have outside counsel who is assisting us doing work related to specific developments. What I don't know is happening is that the, the developers are paying for that counsel. And that is a practice that is common in cities and counties. So when you have a development, it's not just that we have a consultant that prepares the EIR and other things, we are capturing those, but we have outside counsel who are reviewing the EIRs, reviewing the environmental documents, reviewing the findings, giving advice on the myriad of housing, affordable housing requirements that literally change every year. And so I believe that we could achieve some savings to the general fund by better capturing those to the various developers and their applications. So that would just be a matter of working with community development and finance to the extent that we need to track all of that. And then we need to look at whether we have, typically, there are agreements between the developers and the, and the cities that do the approvals, and then sometimes we need to take a look at the conditions of approval to see if we need to strengthen those. So that is one way where we might be able to capture some costs. The other, and I believe we are doing this, but I just need to verify if we are, if it is an enterprise-funded department that is the source of the litigation, we should capture, to the extent we can, the cost of the litigation with the enterprise fund. Now, we do, and actually, in my, in my tenure, there was litigation previously, in which I was actually involved five years ago. We do have to make sure that we follow what's known as Proposition 218. We can't just, you know, charge things without any benefit to the enterprise-funded department or activity, but that is something to look at. And so that way, you have enterprise funds, and then you free up money from the general fund. Another idea is to use an RFP or an RFQ process for our outside counsel. That's not something we have done, and, you know, we had a spike of litigation, and so I think we had a situation where there was just so much work coming in that we hired the counsel that were needed for that particular moment or that particular matter, which I completely understand. But now that we've had a few years of working with a large volume of outside counsel, I think we could develop an RFQ or an RFP, and there are actually a lot of cities that do this. And, you know, cities that just put, this is non-insured outside counsel and litigation, where they know they're not going to have their carrier cover it, but they want to, you know, get some efficiencies, economies of scale, and see if they can negotiate some reasonable rate, you know, rate relief by having certain firms on contract to handle all of the outside counsel work. And that's something that I think would be very beneficial going forward. The other thing which is related, my fourth bullet, is to accentuate the practice focuses. We have two very talented attorneys in our office, and they are developing expertises, and I'm very happy to work with them. I come, and currently, my expertise, if you will, is land use and planning and SEQA, so I'm going to try to work with, use that to help your, your community development department. Where I'm weak is on employment. I don't do employment law. So what you could do is if, when you have the four attorneys, if you, if you have the four attorney model, is try to run the gamut of the general areas that you would cover with your in-house City Attorney. So you have land use, you have, you know, you have employment, you have public contracting, you have police, code enforcement. Those are the broad areas, contracting, public contracting. If you can cover those broad areas, then you don't need to go out to outside counsel with, with limited exceptions. So the idea is that if you, you know, if you have five land use attorneys in your department, you know, you, you know, you're going to have to have people learning these other areas. But what I've seen in in-house City Attorney Departments, where you have, you know, we're a city of 115,000, I believe, is you try to cover the general areas of municipal practice with your in-house, and then when you go to outside counsel, it really is the specialized stuff, litigation, or for instance, telecommunications. We have a firm that has done all of our telecom work, because this is an extremely complex and unique area where you just can't, you know, learn it in a couple of months, right? You need someone who's devoted their, most of their practice time to this area. So that's the kind of stuff that we want to cover with outside counsel, and we want to try to get as much as we can with, with a gent, with the in-house people you hear. You want to cover the general areas. With that, my fifth recommendation, if feasible, is you may want to look, and this is a longer-term thing, at whether a paralegal would be helpful. The paralegal can do a lot of the filing and document review and, and other things that the City Attorney's Office does, and what he or she can do is relieve the in-house attorneys of some of the more tedious and mundane work. So for instance, we have gun petitions, pitchers motions. Pitchers motions are where, where police records are sought. There's a whole process that defense attorneys have to follow to go to court when they have cases and they want to get the personnel records of the officers. There's a lot of form-filling and basic work that I think a paralegal might be able to do. And so if you have that, then he or she can do that work, which frees up the, the assistant City Attorneys, the City Attorney, the deputy, so that they can focus on those general areas, and then they can just kind of review and sign off on the paperwork. And that might free up some hours and allow them to devote more time to, you know, reviewing contracts or drafting ordinances, drafting documents, the stuff that, you know, the work product and, and advice they need to give. So it's just an idea, but it's something where I think you can achieve some efficiencies. And then finally, this is the, this is what I call the best offense is a good defense model, and that is, you want to stop legal problems from ever becoming problems. And the best way to do that, it's never going to be perfect, but think of a, you know, think of soccer. You have, you know, you have midfielders, fullbacks, and a goalie, you know, various layers of defense. Yes, sometimes a goal will be scored, but if you have a really effective defense, you stop the ball from ever getting in the net. And I call this the customer service model, or the embedment model, where the, you have an attorney who is assigned, is assigned to a department, where they're literally working with the department, they're meeting regularly with the department, they're, they're, you know, they're meeting in person, they have weekly meetings, or they're talking to each other, and they're going to maybe the, the meetings of the department, where they're integrating themselves into the, the roles and the functions of the department, not to tell the department how to do its job, but to be proactive, to spot issues. The thing that lawyers, you learn this early on as a law student, your success as a lawyer is not just, you know, memorizing the law and regurgitating it, telling you what it is. It's spotting issues. You have to identify issues, issues that are obvious or issues that are less obvious. And then you address those issues before they become problems. And the, the only way I think you can really do that is if your in-house attorneys are actively integrating with the departments. And so if you have four in-house attorneys, you would have each of them take on a department. Um, your, your city attorney would typically work with management, counsel, clerk. Um, but you would assign an attorney to the other departments and they would actually embed. They would be part of the operations. They would be meeting daily. And they would be able to spot issues, develop rapport, develop relationships, rather than the model of send me a request, you know, send me an email. I'm not saying you don't send emails or, you know, create tracking sheets or other things. But the best lawyering, in my opinion, is done when the client and the lawyer are actually meeting together in a municipal setting. So just an idea. So anyway, I've talked, I'm a lawyer, so I like to talk, um, and, and I never shut up. So I will stop and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do we have any public comments on this item?
No public comment.
All right. Questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Freitas?
Um, let me just go back to, um, you just on the city attorney department, the, the org chart. I noticed on deputy city attorney, there's an asterisk, but I wasn't sure what the asterisk meant, if it meant anything.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I took that, I poached that. I think that is really the settlement.
Yeah, that's just stating, um, yeah, he left off the little asterisk from my, it, this presentation mirrors the attachment I have to this.
Oh, okay.
It just, it just is a notation that that's funding added as part of the DOJ settlement.
Okay, and this may be an HR question because it deals with classifications. What is the difference between an assistant city attorney and a deputy city attorney?
Well, I can, I can explain that, although if, if Anna wants to speak, that's fine. So the deputy is usually your, your entry level. And then the assistant is, um, kind of the supervisor. They supervise the deputy. And then there's the city attorney. Um, in a, in a small department, we would have one, like, usually you'd have two assistants. You know, you'd have two deputies, one assistant and a, and a city attorney. But in large departments, you know, I've, I've seen deputies, then I've seen supervising deputies, then I've seen, and then you have multiple assistants. It's sort of like, uh, in, you know, in the police chief, you know, you have the chief, you have the sergeants, lieutenants. It's kind of the same thing. It's just different terminology.
So this poor deputy has, in essence, for a five-member staff, three bosses? I mean, yeah, the city, the city attorney and the two assistants and the deputy. I know this is part of the, the, um...
It would be one boss. So, so for instance, for the police attorney, that would actually, we need an assistant city attorney because you want to have a high-level person make sure that we hit all the marks. So that person, the deputy, would be backfilling for the, yeah, under, like Kevin.
Okay.
So just one boss and, and the city attorney is up two.
So, you know, and I was looking at everything, I mean, uh, I particularly, Mr. Cole, like and want to get to the, the long-term discussion because I think you, you've given us some interesting things. So when I looked at the, the budget itself and I noticed with outside, uh, legal, legal going from 2.2 to 1.8 to $1 million, but realizing that, um, what did you say? And, and there's still more billings that will need to come and it may be up to 2.2 million. Concern for me is as we move forward with the general plan. Because as, the only person, I guess, on the council that has done the general plan from a policy perspective, there is a lot of legal review and, and, you know, recommendations and things of that sort. And I'm hopeful that we do move into that. And so if we do, has, have those costs been considered in this budget? Because it can be an enormous cost.
The, the general fund, the general plan review, you would definitely want very competent land use council to assist with that. I don't know if we could backbill developers for a general plan, but I do know that you can char, and I believe we have an impact fee.
We do have a general plan, Ms. Merchant. Now, we have a general plan impact fee?
We have a general plan maintenance fee, um, and that is based on what is in the community development budget, what we've collected so far will be u, used over the next two years and actually exceed what our collections have, have been. I know as part of the master fee that'll be coming to, um, council, there's, you know, that will be evaluated to increase, not that it's going to cover kind of what goes over. And in terms of whether, um, legal costs are incorporated in these numbers for the general plan, um, I don't know and I don't, I, these numbers initially were put together by the prior city attorney. So I don't know what encompasses those numbers. There is money built into the planning budget for the general plan. There's a million dollars each in the next two years. I do not know if that budget incorporates legal costs or if that's just other outside consultant costs to prepare the plan itself.
Because back in 2000, 2003 and Ron, you, uh, it was a multi-million dollar issue. You know, I mean, it's not a million dollars a year. I mean, when you finally finished it, it was more like three to five million dollars. So that, that's a big concern that we have if we're going to move forward. You know, the, the legal review becomes frankly, one of the most important aspects of the general plan. Because you want to make it as bulletproof as possible. So I, I would just, you know, just have the city manager and staff consider that as we move forward, at least when the council begins to take an overall view. Because that is a, something that has to be paid.
Yeah.
And the other part for the general plan impact fees, uh, that's pretty much, you know, what we do day-to-day, right? Ms. Br, I missed, um, Merchant?
The impact fee, so any, um, it's a fee that's paid on building permits. I don't know exactly what the fee is. So it's collected and we, you know, track it in the general fund and...
How much is it just roughly?
I don't know what the actual fee is.
If, in the, when we get there, if we could just take a look at it. Because I think from a, from a policy perspective, but also from an implementation special, that's, that becomes a, a very big, big ticket.
We can give you that information when we present the community development budget. Um, but we did go over, um, some, um, some of the notes that we had from, um, our conversations. And this morning I asked that the general plan, um, be moved up from 900,000 a year to a million, um, to pad it a little bit. So the RFQ was going to cost us money. So that's the first part, which, um, Director Store is actually getting together, actually now. Um, and will be posted in the next week or so. That's going to be a big chunk and that's within this year's budget, this, um, current closing out biennium. So then we have 1 million for the net first year of the biennium, 1 million for the second year. And then we build that other 1 to 2 million because it's going to take about three years. Um, so we're trying to forecast out and spread the cost over three years. So you're right, we are, um, projecting 3, 3.5 million.
Hopefully not just the cost, but also revenue, you know, like the, the general plan maintenance fee or what have you. The other that, uh, you know, we obviously are going to have coming up are union negotiations, which means I think that's usually been outside council that does that? I, I'm just raising that question. Is it outside? I don't know.
I'm with Anna.
Pardon?
Dr. Dr. Oh, yes, we'll be talking about this motion.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Uh, so the negotiations are going to be done through our labor negotiator. We use IEDA. So that's covered through them. We've been paying along, um, this whole time. So I don't believe, unless we get into any issues that we need legal. Uh, but for the most part, it should be covered with our, well, we've been paying into our ready for IEDA.
I'm just, you know, looking at the hands and rigid, I know this has been primarily police, but they also do, they, they all, they do all kinds of HR work. And so I'm just looking forward, you know, that may be, you know, something that you want to take a look at as a Plan B type of thing and at least have some reserve there because who knows what's going to happen.
Can I ask a question on, on that point? Uh, excuse me, the, um, IDEA, is that, is that in your budget or is that in the city attorney?
It's in my budget, yes.
Okay, it's in your budget, okay.
The, the other, Mr. Mayor, would just, it's been almost six months, I think December 11th, when the, the city council had to up you on pending litigation. And I would just suggest in the next month or so, that might be a good thing to, to do. Uh, with regards to the long-term cost, cost saving, I, I think really, Mr. Cole, a lot of the recommendations you're making, I, I think they're outstanding. On the, the one thing on the, um, accentuate practice focuses among department attorneys, the only, only thing, I guess, from my, my HR back, backing is cross-training is very critical. Secession, succession planning is very critical. And while I enjoy, I, I agree with you, having expertise, you know, per attorney is important. The problem comes in if they go on a long-term vacation, if they have a long-term illness or if they, they retire or they leave. And so, uh, while I think this is definitely something we should take a look at, there might be kind of a balance between certain duties and responsibilities that they all are experts on, so that when, when a departure happens, that it doesn't automatically require us hiring outside council. I mean, I, I just, I, I like the concept. I guess I, I've seen the negative impact of not having, you know, uh, the department having cross-training. The other, let me just ask, I don't think this has ever happened in Antioch, at least 40 years I know. What about the use of, you know, legal interns? I mean, we, I don't, I know Bolt Hall is no longer called Bolt Hall. But, you know, we have UC Berkeley, we have UC Davis. I mean, we have law schools, you know, right around us. But it, using, you know, interns, you know, legal interns maybe in their third year or whatever is, I don't know if they do that, you know, usually, you know, my recollection is they do, primarily to third-year law students to get some practical, you know, hands-on experience.
It's certainly something we could look at, um, you know, an internship process. My, my sense is you'd, you'd get more interest in the first year and the second year because by the third year, um, they're really looking for clerkships. They're really look, looking for, you know, moving on into a, a firm or a government. I mean, so if you start earlier, maybe like a first year or early second year thing, um, you could do that. But it's a good idea.
I'm ju, I'm just suggesting.
Yeah.
The, um, the other, uh, let's see, that I had a, a concern about was, and this, the customer service model. It, it, with all due respects, Mr. Cole, many, many municipal employees believe when they advise a department or a city council, they get very angry when their advice is not adhered to. And oftentimes, um, a mayor or city council has to say, "Thank you for your advice. You've told us your advice, the, you know, what the exposures may be, but that does not mean we need to do that." And I have to believe in the working departments, i- i- it's kind of finding that balance. I, I like the idea of the city, uh, your, your city attorney staff understanding intimately how the various departments work. But on the same token, it's advice. And the, the apartment manager could say, "Thank you very much. I'll take that in consideration." It may not do that. I mean, there is a balance there.
Sure.
And I have been in, at the county where sometimes county council or the district attorney would come in and they get, there becomes a conflict between that attorney and that department head. Because attorney's upset that the advice is not being adhered to and implemented. Department head gets irritated because they believe it's wrong. You know, so I just, I, I like the idea, but I would just say there is a cautionary note. And sometimes a department head, particularly a new department head, you know, feel sometimes compelled to do it even though he or she don't agree with it. So I just, I just suggest, I like it, but how it's implemented is, you, you need to be very careful.
Agreed.
Not to have an adversarial relationship between that attorney and the department head. Otherwise you have lots of problems.
I agree. I agree with that.
That's all.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Cole, for your, uh, for your presentation. Um, I know Councilmember Freitas already touched on it, but I'm just curious, where are we with the pending contracts that we, that were out there? I know we, we had an extensive list. Where, I just was curious on the status of that.
I believe we've broken through the logjam of the high, uh, the high, the, you know, most, most of them. I, we've worked with the departments. Uh, there are a few lingering issues. Um, you know, s, some policy questions about certain coverages and other practices, but I believe we've worked through that. I know that, that's been a priority since I became interim and I've worked really hard with our department heads. But, um, so that's, that's my understanding.
Okay, because that was problematic and, you know, that, you know, very challenging when relationships that we have with vendors, with outside folks. So I'm happy that we're, we're getting through that and that we're able to, to resolve that and have departments work very efficiently and be able to complete services. So thank you for, for giving the update on that. Um, I am all for, um, having the specialized, uh, attorneys, having, uh, target areas that they are, that they're concentrating on. Yes, I get that they need to be cross-trained, but I think it's a very good idea to have somebody that, you know, you know, uh, we had a young woman that was, uh, that was kind of expert around rent control when we were going through that. It was very helpful because that was that person's expertise. So I am all for that. Um, again, yeah, please include some cross-training, but I, I'm definitely, can, um, definitely get behind that. Can you, and maybe I misunderstood, can you explain the, the customer service model again? Um, just quickly, because there was one part of it I think I misunderstood.
And I apologize, this is a term that I've made up and it maybe it's not the right term. Embedment is probably the better term. The idea is that the city attorney's office is unique. We don't provide a service. We, we provide legal services, but, you know, our other departments interact with the public or third parties or regulated parties. So, you know, police provide public safety. Public Works provides roads, sewer, water. Um, code enforcement provides, you know, code enforcement services. Planning, uh, provides a, an opportunity to develop property, building, regulates building. We don't go out and interact and, and do something direct the way those other departments do. We are essentially serving those departments. And so the idea of customer service is we want those departments to feel like we are a partner in the, in the, in the city attorney's office, that we're there to help them. I do agree with, with Councilmember Freitas. We still have to be a lawyer and we still have to give legal advice. And we have to recognize that our duty is to advise and that sometimes our advice may not be taken. But I, I think the importance is if we know the departments, if we're working with people, we can do that, that, that issue spotting. Um, again, I, I use the analogy, what I learned, the, the thing I learned about earliest in law school is if you can't spot issues on an exam, you will not do well. So you have a sadistic professor that writes up this absurd hypothetical to test your knowledge from the semester. And he or she will usually want you to spot 10 issues. If you can spot nine of those issues, you'll get a great grade. If you spot seven or eight, you'll get a pretty good grade. But if you only spot five of those issues, you're probably not going to do very well. And so what you learn right away in law school is spotting issues is, is what's most important. And really as a lawyer, um, yes, applying the law and being able to describe it and articulate it and talk to someone, but if I can't spot an issue, I can't really help you. That's the idea. So I think maybe I scrapped the customer service quote and maybe, and, and, but embedment just sounds kind of weird.
It's almost like you're saying second set of eyes.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what, okay. So I think it was the customer service that was throwing me off.
Maybe partnering is the better. I, I don't know. I, I'm, we'll figure it out.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cole, for your presentation. I thought it was really good, especially the ideas that you have on ways we can improve and, and better serve the customer, which is the departments and, and the city. I also really appreciate the relationship you've developed with, um, our city manager because that's super important and with the department. So thank you just for what you brought to the city, um, in short term. A couple of questions. Uh, the $50,000 retention or deductible? So, um, Finance Director Merchant mentioned that that's built into the non-departmental budget. Is, is, uh, so, so have you estimated the number of cases that are going to require the $50,000 per case and given that to Finance Director so she can build that into that budget? Is that kind of how those numbers were arrived at?
That has never been provided to me from the attorney's office. What I've done is looked at the historical trends of what we've spent on deductibles. Um, it used to hover around 300, 350,000. Last year it was a little bit higher and actually the budget was 350,000 for this year. But since we've just made some, um, settlements recently that, um, are kind of under our deductible level, like we just paid a close to $100,000 settlement on an employment matter. Um, so I've bumped up the revised budget for this year to 500,000 and I have it at 500,000 for the next two fiscal years as well.
So is that the committed litigation reserve line item? So is that the committed litigation reserve line item in the budget?
No, that is just for anything when, that was actually come up with by the amount by a prior city attorney in Nerlin. She said, "Let's do ten times the deductible amount." And so that's how we came up with the five hundred thousand. And then what that is, is if in a year, like kind of we're seeing this past couple of years, we exceed our budget, we know we have some money set aside in general fund. We have some cash available to pay for that budget overage. So if City Council did want to consider in this budget cycle bumping up that amount, just so we know that this part of the fund balance is reserved, you know, we can definitely revisit that, so.
I was hoping we could reduce it, bump it up, so.
I mean, it's the, you know, I recommend having something in there, and that's why, you know, even though it's been the five hundred thousand, like I said, since prior city attorney in Nerlin, which was a long time ago, that balance is actually really served us well. It's just been really the last few years with the way things unfortunately have unfolded here, that we've had to kind of draw that down, rely on those balances held in the general fund, so.
Remember, Mr. Mayor, on December eleventh, we had thirty-four pending cases.
I know we did, yeah. So I know there's a lot. Yeah.
And a lot of those cases too, which is hard, even if the city attorney's office were to give me something, some of them take years before they're settled. So it could be a case now that four years from now, we're finally having to chew up and then paying the deductible. So that's kind of the hard part as well.
I guess my concern was if we have a hundred cases and it's fifty thousand a pop, that's five million dollars. So I just want to make sure that we're not, it's not, you know, we're not way underestimating what this is going to cost.
No.
So, okay, perfect. The, do we, do you feel there's adequate staffing in the department? Meaning, is either too high, too low, in your observation?
My sense is with the four attorneys, when we hire the DOJ full-time attorney and the use, and the reasonable use of outside counsel, and maybe looking at the paralegal, we're staffed well enough for, we are a city of a hundred and fifteen thousand. So four attorneys sounds fairly normal to me, fairly okay.
So when you were here prior, and it was just you and Rakia, that was way understaffed, I take it?
Way understaffed, yeah. But, you know, that, I mean, just candidly, that seemed like a simpler time. I mean, we did not have the flurry of litigation that you have dealt with in the past five, six years.
Okay. Under, you mentioned the enterprise funds or other funds paying for their own litigation. Is the, on the Brackish D-SAL litigation, is the enterprise fund paying that cost?
It is not currently. It is in the past, as Derek mentioned, a prior case that Tim and I actually worked on together. The enterprise fund did shoulder that. The prior city attorney kind of just logged everything under the, in his budget control. So I, Derek and I have had a couple of conversations, and we're going to go through the invoices for this year and last year that are specifically related to the water matter. That way we can substantiate the water fund, reimbursing the general fund for those costs.
Yeah, we absolutely, in my opinion, need to do that, because it is a water matter, and the general fund should.
Yes, I one hundred percent agree. And that was, you know, one of the things after Derek came on board, you know, I spoke to him about, and so, but it's, you know, because the firm that wants handling that matter handles other matters as well, it's kind of a little bit of a manual process to go through all those invoices and say, "This is for this matter, and then this one's related to the water matter." But, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I think conceptually, I don't have a problem. But I would, since we just had to pass water rates substantially, I don't think the water rates ever envisioned legal costs as a part of that. And so, yes, we could go to the water fund, but it will have an impact on water rates. And so I think, again, we have to be careful and look at the balance that's there.
Then also, I agree, but I think having the general fund pay for it, all of the city paying for a water matter is, you know.
I, is it conceptually? Sure, that makes sense. Practically, what, you know, those water rates, and Mr. Bunting can correct me if I'm wrong, but in those water rates, there was nothing with regards to legal fees. So I'm just saying, yes, it can be done, but it's a broader issue for us. And it was a difficult decision for the council. I forget, what is it, seventy-two percent increase or whatever? What was the water rate increases? Just tell me.
Nine, ten, eleven.
Okay, each year?
Each year.
Yeah. So that's all I'm saying. I mean, we, you know, some people have already complained to us about the cost of a water bill. And I'm just, we need to be careful. Conceptually, yes, but I'm just saying.
Okay. Internal services on the budget, it was in twenty-one, twenty-two, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. It's proposed next year to be one point four million dollars. So that's a significant increase. That cost is being spread back over the other departments, is that true?
So the, for the internal, that's the general fund costs that are being spread across the other funds. So that's the water fund share. The reason that it has increased is just over the last two years with the budget increases in the general fund. You know, take the percentage increase and increase the allocation out to the other funds.
Okay, so when you say that's a water fund share, that's, that, that one point four million is the water fund's share of the city attorney's cost?
Not just city attorney, it's the, oh, sorry. It's, so the one point two, sorry. I apologize, I'm like thinking of the water fund separately. So that is the amount of budget that's being allocated to other funds, not just the water, but sewer, you know, any gas tax, the housing successor, for example. So any department that utilizes legal services.
So some of that is general fund, some of it's non-general fund, correct?
Well, so, right, and that's why the whole, basically, two point four million budget isn't allocated out, because a lot of the budget serves the general fund. You know, they're serving city council, they're serving city manager's office, they're serving finance, public works that falls in the general fund.
Okay. Thank you for that. Oh, MPA, you know, we have an agreement with MPA, we're part of the pooling authority. With the magnitude of our litigation, is there any concern about MPA dropping us at this point that you've heard of? Or, because that would be a whole different animal if we have to self-insure ourselves.
We're aware of an expression of that. I don't know if that's actually a likelihood. I know we're working with them to, you know, give them everything they need to continue coverage. So, you know, my sense is that we're working, the police litigation is really what drove everything. MPA is not covering the D-SAL plant litigation. So it's the police litigation. And my sense is that the litigation that's being filed against us currently is not, you know, it's not as momentous as it was before. There's some, you know, what we call municipal torts, you know, dangerous condition cases, the basic cases that get filed regularly. The new filings are not massive. It's just the Allen case, which is, I think, one case that is essentially twenty-three separate cases associated with police. We're still working through that. So my hope, if there is a concern, is that our pooling authorities will see that if you look at the actions from here going forward, we're not, they're normal, I mean, not, when I say they're normal, I'm not suggesting it's a good or a normal thing to have litigation. It's just we are a city of a hundred and fifteen thousand. So when I look at what's being filed against us since I've been here, it's not abnormal, let's just say that. And so I think that would be our response if there are concerns like that.
Okay. And then in relationship to the Brackish Water litigation, is there a reason why MPA isn't representing us in that? Is that, is that normal that they wouldn't handle a public works type project, for example?
Correct. That would be outside of coverage, because that's a, you know, that's something that is a, is essentially a contract dispute. And so contract disputes are not covered by any carriers.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Any other questions from council? All right, well, thank you very much. That was excellent and very helpful. I guess we're on to the HR budget.
Thank you so much. Director Cortez will swap with our city attorney.
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council, and everyone that's here tonight. Before I get started, I did want to extend a sincere thank you to my HR team. You see, I'm missing two of them, but I just want to say they work very hard. We could not do, I could not do the work in HR without them. They're amazing. So I just wanted to start with that. I also did want to thank the other departments, whoever is here and who's not here, for all their partnership and collaboration with HR. Again, we could not do our work without working very closely with all the departments. So today's presentation will provide an overview of the HR department's budget, our staffing levels, our major initiatives, and any key priorities for the upcoming year, and two years, actually. We'll just start with that. So again, here's our, an overview of our HR's budget. Sorry, it seems to be stuck, it's not moving. Oh, there we go. Okay, so right here, you can see our, this is our organizational chart as of now. So we, the Human Resources Department is comprised of the HR director, a recently added position, which is the Human Resources Manager. It's currently vacant, however, in the process of recruiting for that position. We also have three human resources technician, and we says specialist, because they have the ability that within time, they're able to move into a specialist position. And we also have a human resources analyst. We have an administrative assistant too, and a risk and safety specialist. Again, that's a newly created position. We're in the process of filling it. Probably within the next three weeks, we'll have the position filled. So I'm very excited with an applicant that we have that we're, we're really excited that we're going to be moved forward. So here is an overview of what human resources functions, what we do. So in our department, we are responsible for the recruitment and staffing. We're also responsible for the compensation and benefits. That would be anything, COLAs or any adjustments to minimum wages, ensuring that all the proper benefits are being provided to our employees according to their contracts. We're also responsible for leave management, which would include any time that an employee goes out on leave on whether it's a medical, workers' comp, or any personal leaves. We're also responsible for ensuring that employees are taking their mandatory trainings and development as well. And as City Attorney Cole, Derek Cole mentioned, is we, our department is very, is responsible to ensuring that we're going to be mitigating so that we don't get to a place where we're going to have any issues. So we want to make sure that we're doing everything that we have to do in our department. We also are responsible for performance management, so that would be for any performance evaluations, ensuring if there are any issues with employees that we guide the department in the proper way of handling any personnel and performance issues. Policy implementation and compliance, again, this is a big function that we do, and that is ensuring that every department is, and employees are following policies and that we are complying with all the laws and regulations. Our employee, labor relations and employee relations, again, that is our union, our negotiations, ensuring that employees have proper, with our contracts, making sure that they have, and then for the employee relations part, I'm sorry. The, that would be for any time that we have any issues with grievances or anything related to contracts, when employees are not in accordance with their contracts. So our employee safety and wellness, that is also something that we try to do to maintain a safe place. And our medical after-retirement administration, that's for any employees that retire with the city. We have two benefits right now for medical after-retirement. We have some employees that were, that retired or that were hired after a certain time. They're able to get medical after retirement, and it's a reimbursement, in a form of reimbursement. We also have the new employees that were hired after a certain time, that those are, it's an account, so that would be like a MAR account. The ones that we administer would be the ones that were working for us that we have to do the reimbursements. And so that would be that. And then the workers' compensation administration, again, that is ensuring any time that an employee is injured, ensuring that they have the proper care and that they are compensated for if there was an injury during the work. So here's a staffing overview. I did for what recruitment efforts we did for calendar year 2024. As you can see here, we hired ninety-three employees. Those ninety-three employees, we added twelve positions during the fiscal year. However, we did lose fifty-four out of those employees. I kind of broke it down. I highlighted police and public works, because those are the two largest departments in the city. And those were the ones that had the highest number of vacancies. And that's why I highlighted those two. So as you can see here, for the police department, we hired forty-five. There were five positions added, we had eleven promotions, and we had thirty-eight separations. For public works, we were able to hire thirty-two. We added seven new positions and had eight promotions with nine separations. And the other, where it says other, that's for other departments citywide, and we were able to hire sixteen for promotions and seven separations. Here is an overview of the staffing levels. So we currently are funded. And before I continue, I wanted to just clarify that there was, the number four twenty-two is actually four twenty-three. There was a position that was recently approved and added that I did not, would not have been accounted for in here. So it is actually a total of four twenty-three funded positions. So for the police department, we have a hundred and fifteen funded, and that would include all levels from chief all the way down to police officers. There are eighty-four filled with thirty-one vacant. For non-sworn, that would include animal services as well with dispatch records and any other civilian staff that they have. So they are funded for fifty-nine. We have forty-five of those filled with fourteen vacant. Public works, we are now at seventeen. That number was very high prior to last year, however, we've made a great progress in bringing that number down. Our public safety and community resources, we have seven vacancies there now. Community development, we have four. And city attorney, we have one in that department. City manager, we have one. That would be the assistant city manager. The city clerk, we have one vacancy there. Actually, that's the additional position, there's two vacancies there. And then economic development, we have that one vacancy. Finance, we have three. Human resources, we have two. Information systems, we have one. And where it says all other departments, it says eighteen. That's because those are all filled. And they have, we have no vacancies in the other departments. So here is the human resources budget. As you can see, the change between the previous years and the drastic change was due to including and adding the new human resources manager to this position, I'm sorry, to this budget. I'm sorry, to this budget. So here is a breakdown of some of the contracts that we have in our department. A lot of these are mandatory, that we have to have some of these services. We have our NeoGov, which we utilize for our recruitment, for advertising, for our employee onboarding. And I do want to explain, before, about maybe two years ago, our staff was doing all of the onboarding in person. It was taking about three hours per employee. And even preparing to meet with an employee was taking about half a day just to gather all the documents to put that together. But two years ago, we actually are now utilizing NeoGov for onboarding and it's taken about 30 minutes for the onboarding. So that's where we're able to move through a lot more recruitments. And also, we just recently signed the contract to do our per-performance evaluations through the system to streamline it, to make it a lot easier for supervisors and for us to track it to ensure that they're all being completed in a timely manner. It's not in effect yet, however, we're already in the initial steps of getting that set up. And now, the other thing I want to highlight is with the personnel action forms and all the other forms were being manually handled. Now, we're utilizing NeoGov to route those and hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we're gonna, we're testing, we're testing it out right now, but we are going to be able to sign everything electronic and it's going to save a lot of time and we'll be able to track, track it better as well. Shredded services, we do process and we have a lot of paperwork in HR, so we need those services. Various firms for the outside investigators, they're approximately, I couldn't, it really depends on what happens in a year, so it's about $7,000 in investigations fees for our fingerprint fees. This would include our DOJ fees that we have to pay directly to the DOJ, but we also utilize a company that we send our employees to, to make it easy, which is a Diablo Life Scan. So all of that together, that's about, you know, again, depending on how many employees we hire, it's about between 25 and 30,000 a year. That would include any of our full-time employees as well as our part-time staff that we hire for Parks and Recs. So we are now using Hire Right, which is a third-party administrator for, to conduct background for any of our employees. Right now, we're utilizing mostly for our higher-level positions because we felt that we needed a deeper dive into our employees being hired. And again, that ranges between $200 to $500 to applicant, depending on the level, the position. The IDA, this is what we recently discussed, which is our labor negotiator, that's $81,600. And the way they come up with that and they bill us, it's on a monthly basis. It's based on the number of employees we have and the number of contracts that we have. It might seem a little low since we're going to be negotiating for six contracts. However, we pay along the whole time, even whether we're negotiating or not. We're, it's a continuous fee that we have to pay. We also have these various companies that we use for annual subscriptions, such as Laserfish, Adobe, Canva, anything that we utilize and that we need to do any annual subscriptions would be in that line item. Consultant, I recently retained a company to, a consultant to help with the updating of our personnel rules and city policies. Our personnel rules are from 1978 and they have not been updated. So this is going to be a great thing for the city and the city policies as well. Here is the loss control fund. And this fund is mostly for our worker's comp, as you can see here. And that's for the insurance policies, that would be for like our premiums that we have to pay the MPA for the services that we provide for our worker's comp. And again, the premiums. The total expenditures, you see there, I'm sorry, the services and supplies, that would be some of the expenses we have for our employees' safety. Let me go to the next screen. For our safety program expenses, our wellness program expenses, and any safety-related items like, such as updating our AD machines, replacements of the parts. So there's various amounts in there. For our employee assistance program, that comes out of our budget for the loss control and then that's where you see that, $18,000 per year. Now, for the upcoming goals for our human resources team. We are working on coming up with the, and researching at different systems that we can utilize to provide online services to our employees to make it a lot easier for our employees to either make any changes to their benefits. That way, they can access their information and go directly to the site versus coming to us. We don't mind employees coming to us, but I think this would just benefit the employee to have the information readily available to them. We are also looking at establishing and maintaining an employee appreciation program. This is going to help us with our retention for our employees. We're also looking at implementing a new supervisor training program. We currently don't have any program in place, but we want to ensure that we have a program that anyone that is, either a new hire as a supervisor or if we promote anyone from within, they'll be able to go through this program to ensure that they have all the proper training. And also, we're going to be looking at establishing a succession planning program for the city. We do understand that that is something that we have lacked in the past and this is something that we know that is very important. So we're going to spend some time in focusing on this area as well. Another upcoming goal is to finalizing our personnel rules and our city policy updates and to complete our labor negotiations for six bargaining units this year. So we're going to be starting here within the next couple of, maybe within the next month or so. And our plan and our goal is to get it done before the contracts expire. We're also looking at updating, improving and updating our HR webpage to, again, to make it a lot more user-friendly and we'll be able to make a lot more resources available to the public as well as for the employees. And we're going to continue our recruitment efforts. I did want to highlight that, again, as I mentioned, this year, this past year, we hired 93 employees. I look back and in '23, there was, we hired 43. So there was a big difference between '21, then '22. That number went up to 63. So slowly has been, we've been making all great progress on hiring. However, we do have challenges when we, sometimes we have a lot of people who are either retiring or are leaving the city. So we have, again, this great team, they've worked very hard to get us to where we are today. So I just want to thank everyone here and I'm open for questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the City Council? Or, I'm sorry, any public comments?
We do not have any public comment.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I just had one. I know that when we first came in, or when I first came in during this team, that prior to my arrival, I had seen the vacancy rate was pretty significant. I want to say it was around 120, is that all right?
We were about 101, we were in the low 100s, but yes.
So that's how many positions have been filled since that time?
Yes. So we, and I also made some changes internally to help with the recruitment efforts. So what I did is I have assigned, especially, and I understand the priority with the police department, hiring police department employees, especially our sworn. And that is the most difficult recruitment as we have to follow a lot of the post guidelines and they're very specific on all of the criteria that we have to make sure that we do as part of the background and the whole process itself. So one of the changes I made is I assigned one of the technicians to work solely on the recruitment and I assigned another one to assist with the onboarding since that takes a lot of time after we hire an employee. We have to enroll them in every system and any, every benefit. So it was taking time from one of the technicians to do it all. So I kind of shifted some, you know, things around. And then I have one other, our admin assistant, who assists with follow-ups with the medical. So again, I feel like that's made a great, you know, change where I'm seeing. And, you know, I almost was looking at ways that we can streamline and make it better. So we still provide the same services to all the other departments, however, focused in an area that I know that was very important.
And then looking at your upcoming goals with the new supervisor training program, looking at succession planning program, can you talk a little about that? Because I just, to me, having, coming from a different type of organization, a high school, you know, you're only as good as, as an organization as the people that work with you in the organization. And I think it's always been important to value everybody at all levels and to honor people's work. And I see we have a celebration coming up. And so I think those things are really important. But as was stated previously, it might have been when we were talking about Parks and Rec. But one of the things that, that I'm interested is how we, you know, prepare or empower employees to will someday maybe become leaders in their own right within the organization. Because, you know, when we hire people, when I was at Antioch High School and we hired someone, we wanted to hire him not just to fill the position for this year and next year, but wanting him to be a long-term employee so that they could benefit the organization and hopefully grow and become a leader in their own right. So can you speak a little bit about those two programs? I'm just curious about the succession planning program and the new supervisor training program.
Yes, so for the new supervisor training program that I have in mind is, and again, these are something that we're working towards, so we don't have anything said. But what I'm envisioning with that program is, again, when we hire a new supervisor is to ensure that within the six months, their first six months, they are, they take all the necessary trainings that they need. I have found here that sometimes we have not provided some of the resources, so I want to be able that during those six months and then do the follow-ups to make sure that we're not only just assigning the trainings, but that we're following through, making sure that, and we're holding everyone accountable, that they're taking the trainings. And, and again, and possibly doing some, you know, follow-ups after that to ensure that that is, you know, possibly during that time, making sure that they're given their expectations, their goals, all of that within that period. And as far as the succession planning, that's more in the early stages. It's something that I would have to talk to all of the, and get all the department heads together to figure out a good, you know, program that's going to be successful. But some of the things I could, you know, think of possibly doing is, you know, having maybe mentors, maybe more cross-training so that way they're learning other areas of the department, I'm sorry, of their jobs so that they're not, and they find interest, right, of trying to keep moving up within the organization if that's what they want to do.
And then finally, with our salary structure, how do we compare to local or neighboring cities? I'm just curious what that looks like. Because I know that in Antioch Unified School District, that was always an issue, is how we compared to our neighboring districts. We, Antioch Unified is actually a pretty well-paid organization in terms of employees throughout the organization. So I don't know what comparisons we have, but I'm interested to know that so that we're not losing high-quality employees to neighboring cities for the same type of work. However, the pay scale may be different, I don't know where we stand with that.
Right, so with that, I think there is a, it depends on the position here at the city. So we have some positions that we, that I would say that they are compensated. I wouldn't say well, but I think that we're, you know, in line with all the other agencies. But we do have some positions that we're under, we're not paying as much as other agencies, nearby agencies. And what we, that, when we do exit interviews, that is one of the things that we are hearing is that it is the pay. They feel that their employees can go work elsewhere with less work. The areas that we are seeing where we lose a lot from our, it could be from our public works department when they go to special districts. Special districts do pay a little bit more than some agencies and some cities. So it varies depending on the position, but that is something that we have heard in the past. And one of the reasons why we might be losing some, some employees.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a follow-up question to Mayor Portem Rocher's questions along the new supervisor training and also kind of links back to the online services portal for the employees, which I think is a great idea. Through that, through that portal, will employees get the opportunity to see, oh wow, there's a training in my area where I can get certified or training where I can go up a step? Will they also have, will that portal also have an educational component that they can see opportunities, whether the training's here or training someplace else, or online or in person? Will the portal include that?
Maybe not the portal, but what I, the, our HR webpage that I'm looking at updating and especially for our employees, would be to provide a lot more resources to employees. And that is something that we want to make sure that employees know all the resources that they have available to them. So that would be something that we can either look and adding it at the online portal or we could do it on the other, the webpage. But again, our goal is to provide as much information and resources and tools to our employees so they have that available to them.
So a follow-up to that, because you said that's on the webpage. Do you, it's probably really hard to tell. How many employees are actually going to that page to seeing that that opportunity's there? Because I just want to make sure that they know, and it's an easy route for them to know, that there's training opportunities available to them. Do you, would you have any idea how many employees are actually going to the website?
I'm sure we'll be able to pull some metrics once we have that, you know, portal. I'm sure we'll be able to pull to see how, in what areas they're looking at more, right? What would be more of their interest? So we'll be able to pull metrics. So yes, again, this is something that we're looking at the online portal. We're still researching on what would be the best one to have. But that is definitely something that we can add and then, you know, take a look at.
Well, I'm glad that you're, you're looking at that because I know at previous jobs, that, that, you know, on the online portal, that's where it was and also opportunities where if there was a fee, that companies would pick it up. So I'm just saying, when you look into it, please, you know, think about adding that. And then will you, and this is kind of for myself and the public, explain the recruiting process from when the council goes, we approve this position? Because I think a lot of people think, oh, the council approved the position in two days, that person's going to, there's going to be a person in that position. I know Chief last night at the district forum meeting kind of talked about the process of when, when we hire for the police department. If you can kind of talk, talk, talk about that process so the public can understand, hey, it's, this does take some time.
Yes. And it varies on the position, right, that we're recruiting for. But a lot of our recruitment processes are guided through our, either our personnel rules. So we have to make sure that we're following through a lot of the steps because we have to follow our personnel rules and our contracts, our MOU. So from when council approves a position, then the next step, as soon as after we get it approved, we have to create a position code in our system. So we have to go and work with finance to create that code. Once we have that code, we utilize it and we update our NeoGov where we have to upload the new classification. Once we do that, but then we also wait for the departments to submit their recruitment request form, which that would help us to let us know either what account it's going to be paid out of. It's going to tell us what the director wants, you know, in that recruitment, whether they're going to request either an examination or just, is it just going to be an interview? What steps do they want to see in the process? So after we have the form and we start the process of the recruitment, we have to post it for a minimum of two weeks. After we post that recruitment, depending on how many applications we get, then we have to review all of the applications. We review, we do the initial in HR, we do the initial, to ensure that they meet the minimum qualifications. After that, then it's sent to the SME review, which is the subject matter expert, which would be a department head or anyone in their department. Then they have to review the applications based on the qualifications of that job. So that, after that is done, then we have to then schedule the interviews. We like to give our applicants enough time to schedule their interviews so that adds another maybe two to three weeks. After the interview, then we also have this, you know, we do the initial to get them placed on the eligibility list. After that, then it's handed to the departments. The departments then do a second round, which is more of, at the second round of interviews. So after that is done, and then that's when they can make the selection, they tell us who they're interested in, we have to do reference checks, then we have to do background checks and by that time. So I would say it's anywhere between four months until, from the start of the recruitment until we can actually, you know, anywhere between three to four months to get a person on board.
Yeah. Well, thank you, yeah, for, for explaining it, because I think a lot of people just don't know, like, the, the whole process. So, thank you, thank you for explaining that.
Any other, I, I, I think, to your point, Councilmember Wilson, it's also the fact that you don't, just because we approve a position doesn't mean it goes right immediately into the pipeline, right? I mean, there's order that other people, so, yeah, it's much priorities and things like that. On the, by the way, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for, you all for the great job you guys do supporting the city. It's a really important department. Under the staffing levels, you had sworn PD at 115. Isn't that at 117 now with the DOJ?
The additional positions are added starting July 1st.
Also, they're, they're not in this?
So, the snapshot that Anna provided is for right now staffing.
Okay, okay, good. Super excited about the updating of the personnel rules. And I, I know that that's something that's hard to find the time to do, so I'm glad that that's happening. Under the, the loss control, it says current service charges, and it's going from this year 2.7 million to next year 4.4 million, to next year 5 million. What, can you explain?
So, the, so this is an internal service fund. It gets billed out, quote unquote, through payroll. So, that's what shows is the workers' compensation expense. So, it says current service charges, because it's the billings to payroll essentially, to come and reimburse the workers' compensation costs. You can see that the workers' compensation premiums, as noted, are going up 28%. So, that's, you know, part of the significant increase in the charge out of workers' compensation to the departments through payroll.
But so this, that's, that's one part of that, right, the 28%? Because this is going up $1.7 million between this year and next year.
Right. So, there is some, if you notice from the prior years, there's some accumulation of funds in the, the fund. And so, just because we had some salary savings, and so we utilize that to reduce the 24, 25 amount that needs to be allocated out to departments, left a little bit in there at year-end, so that, you know, there's a little bit to utilize so that the 4.4 next year isn't actually, you know, 4.6. So.
Are, are you all concerned about the trend we're looking at with, like, insurances and things like that to just continue to wildly increase, because it's outpacing everything, right? Probably even PG&E. So, is, is that trend, are we expecting that to continue into the future?
I will say for workers' comp, we did have, last year, we did have a big increase in a lot of medical, you know, injuries for certain departments. So, we did see an increase last year where I don't anticipate it being as high probably in the next coming years. It was just, it was just a very, a year that was very, a lot of things were happening.
Yeah, and, and, so, yeah, because it's going up a million dollars, or whatever percent that is next year, and then a little bit more the following year, so.
Yeah, we built in 10% in fiscal year '27, just because we actually don't get notified by MPA until about January or February timeframe each year what they're proposing as the rate increases. And we're, I mean, we never know, it could be 20%, but we felt that 10% was kind of a good middle ground. We didn't want to just say CPI, because obviously that's unrealistic. So, you know, in, in talking with Anna, we were just thinking it's kind of a middle ground rather than immediately jumping that we're going to maybe perhaps have another, you know, 20 to 30%. If we do get that, of course, you know, we will definitely be accounting for that in the budget and, you know, notifying council of that. But it's hard when we don't get the estimates until January, February. And then the estimates, of course, are always based on how many workers' comps claims you have this year. So, you really, it's not something that you can really, we don't know tomorrow if something's going to happen to an employee. So, it's a really hard metric to estimate cases that we may potentially have in a year.
Okay, perfect. And then I asked the city attorney's office the same thing, but do you believe you're adequately staffed to accomplish everything, your, the high demands that are being expected of your department?
I believe with the addition of the HR manager, that's going to be very helpful, especially with the upcoming negotiations with the, you know, with all the new programs that I want to implement. So, yes, I think for now, I would think that right now we would be adequately staffed.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Fredis.
With regards to the organizational chart, you know, we have, and I know the city manager's promoting succession planning, and it just seems, you know, that we have the human resources director, then we have a human resources manager, which is peculiar. I mean, why, why wouldn't we call it a deputy director? It is the number two person in the department, right?
Correct, yes.
So, why, why do we, I, I don't get why we call them manager. I mean, most, I came from classification and HR, so it's like, hmm, that seems odd to me.
And that was the idea, we used to have a risk manager. So, we converted, and we, we didn't eliminate the position, but we didn't fund it anymore. So, I took that, and I felt that we needed, the department would be better with a human resources manager so that they knew not just one area, but it was actually more of the other areas in human resources.
Well, that's why I was saying, you know, deputy. Deputy is everything.
And that was partly, again, just to try to save on some money. Because if we added an assistant or deputy, we'd then create a compaction issue where you might have to then keep increasing some of the other positions.
I just find it confusing, you know, from a HR perspective. So, let me ask you, Mayor Portem Rocha asked a question, and I was just curious. We used to have a Bay Area Salary Survey that looked at governmental jurisdictions, both counties, cities, special districts. We intentionally did not use City and County of San Francisco. We intentionally did not use East Bay MUD. But all other cities and counties, you know, and cities and special districts, we did use. Do we still have that?
No. So, we recently, the city actually conducted a survey, a salary survey, I want to say was in '21. So, they selected different cities just based on maybe the size of, similar to the city of Antioch. I don't believe they used any districts, but we, yeah, we don't use, you know, for, and then our, our COLAs were based on, not on any CPIU or anything like that.
It used to be the HR directors would meet monthly or quarterly. Do they still do that?
I have not seen that.
Really?
Yes.
I, I would just recommend maybe to go back to revisit that, because it was a great source of information and, you know, salary surveys, conditions and things. So, that's what were discussed at these meetings, and everybody benefited from it.
Right. I am part of a email group for all of the Northern California HR directors, so I do get a lot of information based on emails. So, they do have an annual, actually, it's twice a year where they meet, all of the directors meet, and then you get a lot of information, like you said. So, if you're not able to make those meetings, then you're, they're sending a lot of information via email.
I'm just suggesting for the city manager, the PMA, the Public Managers Association, maybe a topic, because it takes a lot of money, you know, to do salary surveys. And if you, if you can have a group, you know, that can pay or underwrite the costs and the information data is used for everybody, it saves a lot of time, energy, and effort. I'm just suggesting that that may be a way of, of cutting costs. Will the risk and safety specialists also do safety training?
Yes.
Okay, so. I think that's, well, the other question that basically came up during the controversy with the police department employee evaluations. I'm going to assume that all employee evaluations, it's, it is systematic, and they're done, and they're on time, and there are not, not holes.
We're already making big progress on that.
Progress means there are arsenal holes.
There are some that are still pending.
Oh, yeah, I just, I'm just, you know, we, we should learn from our lessons, you know? And I just want to make sure that employee evaluations are systematic.
Yeah, I can speak to this. So, it's too separate. I feel like even though we're one big group, I will say that the police department is doing much better on this front. They've had consistent performance evaluations of all officers for the last two years, I believe. And so, they are the sweetheart darlings of the city. And we are, that's why we need our PIO, because we're not telling all these stories, right? So, they're doing really great operationally. For us, you know, just like Anna said, she has implemented a new platform under NeoGov for performance evaluations. And so, my plan is that performance plans will be made for the directors to kind of coincide with the budget year. So, the performance plans will be made in June to kick off a July 1st performance year, where they will be then fully evaluated in June of next year, and that's the cycle every year. So, because we are the people who model our expectations, that should cascade down to the supervisors and their employees. So, that goes with the new supervisor training, the portals, it all coincides.
Yeah, I just, I think the information should be shared at least semi-annual annually with the city council to ensure that things are being done. I don't want to have that exposure. And frankly, fairness to every employee has a right to know how she or he is doing in the organization.
Right, I agree. And I would also say that performance evaluations, for me, are not about raises. They're actually a communication tool.
Right.
So, there should be bi-weekly, monthly check-ins anyway, and a half yearly, half-year review. So, by the time you get to your full-blown performance evaluation, nothing is a surprise, right? And that's coincides with the health of the organization.
The other, they're just, on human resources budget, you don't need to go back, but you have computer slash phone maintenance, and maintenance has a red line under it. Were we supposed to interpret something about that, or is this, was that a, is it an issue?
I think it's the computer saying it's a spelling.
Oh, is that, okay. I, I just, I saw it, and it's like, oh, you know, what is it?
Yeah, it's just because the maintenance with the period is, you know, shortened. So, yeah, it's just kind of like a double-check this.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to, it's like, well, are they telling us something? And we're supposed to see what that's, what that is. The, the other thing on upcoming goals and objectives, and it's really a kind of a city manager question, because you have improved and updated the HR's website. Does PIO get involved in that, or is that going to be separate and distinct?
No, so, that, yes, PIO will be across all, but we're also getting a new website. So, all this will be embedded, and what, the discussions about the internet and the website are all one. So, the PIO will be involved in everything. Just for usability, access, all that stuff, yeah.
That's why I'm raising that question specifically, is usability and the universal access. The other, Ms. Cortez, I just, we, you have six bargaining units. How many unions are there?
We have seven. So, there's only one that will be in April of next year.
In the county, we have sometimes one union, but it can have 20 bargaining units that have to be negotiated. So, the other, do all six of these come up this coming fiscal year?
Yes. It will, so we have two that are going to expire in August, at the end of August. And then we have the other four that are going to be expiring at the end of September.
Okay, wow. You have six in a two-month period. Okay. Wow. And the other thing, Director Wilson brought this up. You know, sometimes it, it's beneficial to take a look at how things are done in the HR, particularly with the testing and hiring and things of that sort. And I would, you know, just suggest that maybe to go back and audit the process and really ask yourself the question, are we getting information that's valuable for the time, energy, effort, and dollars that we're spending into it? And, I mean, Antioch has a very, very thorough process, and I would argue that not all of your neighboring jurisdictions have this process. And so, you might want to just take a review of that and audit. I really would call it an audit to see if we need to continue doing that if there's little to no value.
Yeah, right. So, we do have an operational assessment happening for Public Works, Information Services, and Human Resources in the next six months. And they will be looking at streamlined service delivery in conjunction with Anna, and give us a report.
And the last one's not an HR question, it's really to the city manager as well. And this one, when, when we went to the, when the mayor and I went to the League of California Cities for the, the training, you know, there is required training, AB 1234, as well as sexual harassment.
Yes.
And there's a policy question, you don't have to answer tonight, but I think between your office, the attorney's office, and the city clerk's office, somebody needs to keep track of our training and to, and let us know when it's required. Because I know, you know, Monica's on a different timeframe, because she's, you know, serving long-term. But Ron and I immediately had to do some of the training, and then it becomes annualized. And so, I just want to underscore, you know, both for elected and appointed, you know, there are requirements. I don't know who's going, if that's a city clerk responsibility, if it's a city attorney responsibility, but we need to figure that out and direct at least the elected and appointed, because all, all elected have to do AB 1234, as well as the sexual harassment.
And I can let the city clerk speak to it, but I will say from the city manager's office, it is a risk management issue, so, and legal issue, so it would be the city attorney, myself, and the clerk. Yeah, so there are some things that the city attorney will do. There are some things that the city clerk will be in charge of, and then I just want to make sure it happens for our exposure, but.
Yes. So, I have been working with HR, and I will be taking over all of the elected official training. We do it all online. I'm going to be sending you the link with all of the information. I know there's additional information I need to provide you guys with with regard to the training and why it needs to be completed, but I will be sending you that link. And if you have any issues with the link or login information, reach out to me, and I'll be working with Anna and her team on getting you acquainted with the program.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Human Resources or City Manager? Seeing none, thank you very much. That concludes our city council meeting. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion to adjourn at 7:57 PM carries unanimously.
Wow, they actually finished an hour early.
I guess so, right?
Yeah.